Hey, Happy Friday, everybody. Welcome to the Standard Studios. My name is Annie Gausse. I'm a senior editor here at The Standard. And we're here today to talk about the future of San Francisco Public Schools, which have been through a lot of turmoil and turnover in the past few years. So joining us today to unpack it all is our political editor, Han Lee. We have Phil Kim, the president of the Board of Education, and Jamie Hewling, the vice president of the Board of Education. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, and for those of you watching out there, we would love to take your questions. The best way to do that is to hop over to Vimeo. You can just leave a question in the Q and A, and we will get to as many as we can.
Well, welcome. Congrats first on Jamie's election and also on becoming the president. So are you two enjoying your job so far? All those late-night meetings on Tuesday night?
Enjoying. I would say it is an honor and a pleasure to be serving this capacity. It's no -- I think we both had a desire to be a part of this board because we believe so deeply in our public schools. And so a lot of this work, albeit challenging, I think we knew clear-eyed going into this. I mean, I did at least, that we were going to be a part of something really important. So yeah, I am enjoying it. I think it's always -- it's tough to engage in the harder conversations, but I'm an educator, so this is my life's work.
Yeah, and as a public servant of over a decade, this is a new way to serve for me, and it's one that I am really enjoying because it gives me more opportunities to connect with members of the community, to learn about what's happening on the ground. I got to go visit Lafayette Elementary this morning. And I think that it's really important at a time like this for people to be able to be in conversation with their electeds, to feel like we're rebuilding trust. And to me, that is a really important job and one that I am enjoying.
Yeah, and we all know, you know, everybody's talking about the school layoff right now. And, you know, I would imagine all those meetings are very contentious, you know, going all the way to late night, right? And you just approved a preliminary layoff Tuesday night. So how are we going to navigate all this fallout aftermath? And of course, like, what's going to happen? What are we going to expect about the layoff?
I mean, I think we have a long way to go before we fully understand the entire picture of where we are as a district. I mean, you're right. We issued -- we authorized the district to issue preliminary notices just on Tuesday. But we have quite a bit of ways until May, June, when we'll actually understand the full budget picture and we'll know kind of the official final tallies that we have in front of us. And so there is both a legal process in front of us and an emotional journey in front of us. And the reality is just what we know is going to be coming in terms of new information and new data that will help to inform exactly where we land in June.
And I think that the board and the superintendent all understand that it is of the utmost importance that we adopt a balanced budget. And so from the board perspective, I don't think the need to make responsible fiscal decisions is contentious. I think it's very sobering. And we take the gravity of those decisions and how they affect people's lives, their educations, really seriously. And so for us, I think the work ahead is to make sure that we can balance our budget with as few negative impacts as possible to our community and that we can do so in a really strategic way that protects what's most important in the district.
And the teacher union, UESF, has been calling the cut or the layoff excessive. Do you agree?
I think that we have a pretty clear kind of charge in front of us in making sure that we deliver a balanced budget and bring our district to solvency. That charge is very clear. And as Jamie mentioned, we're pretty clear-eyed in wanting to make sure that we do everything we can to give ourselves the greatest amount of flexibility to be able to build a district that serves our students well, that meets the vision and values that we've laid out. And so what we're really doing right now is following what is legally required of us to eventually have, you know, concrete decisions that we need to make to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our students. And so, you know, what exactly that number is, we're working through right now. And I know that staff and the superintendent, every single day, are in deep conversations with the state, with our colleagues, to really understand, like, how do we go about this in the most, not just like legally responsible and fiduciary responsible, but like in the most empathetic and deeply, in a personal way, that we understand it impacts families and students for sure.
And I think UESF is communicating a really important point, which is that many more people are going to receive preliminary layoff notices on March 15th than are actually going to be laid off. And what Phil's referring to in terms of state requirements and legal requirements is that for anyone who may potentially be laid off, they need to receive a notice, and the board needs to authorize that notice to go out in advance of March 15th. But budget numbers are still being adjusted, and not just because of the district and its process, but because the state of California has not fully adopted its budget, and that is where our funding flows through. Even though education is funded from local taxes, it goes to the state, and then the state gives us back those funds. And so until the governor's final budget is adopted, we don't fully know how much money we have. And so we're keeping flexibility in terms of making sure that if some people are laid off, that they're able to -- some people will have seniority, and then they will be able to choose another position within the district, and they will bump someone else. And each of those people who may potentially be affected by that chain need to receive a notice. So ultimately, the number of notices is more, and we know that it is many more, than people who we will actually have to say goodbye to at the end of this year. And so I really appreciate the communication that UESF has had around that and so that their members know and our wonderful educators know that just because they've received a layoff notice does not mean that we actually intend to terminate employment at the end of this year.
Yeah, so the initial number now is about 837, right? I've been covering that. So the actual, like, in May or in June, the actual number would be around 500? Is that --
Well, I think what's really important to know is that right now, the authorization given is around positions. We're talking about what are the positions that we need to notice so that we can make sure that we again have the greatest level of understanding with the needs of our schools, right? So the conversation right now is within that level, is positions. Now, it could be down the road that we may -- that the noticed positions may close. I mean, that's where the cost savings come in for a district in consolidating a role. But the individual in that role may find a role elsewhere, right? Perhaps in a classroom that we really need, right? And so that conversation is too early to tell right now, but the conversation is taking place is what are the essential positions that we need to consider in order for our district to realize kind of cost savings in all of this?
And the superintendent shared at Tuesday's meeting that the preliminary numbers for those who have opted in to the supplemental early retirement program from the district are looking optimistic. And so we don't know the final number of actual layoffs because that number will be reduced, I think, by the savings of the SERP.
Yeah, the early retirement will probably make the layoff less painful. That's one of the scenario, yeah.
So where does this leave the school closure conversation? Because Maria Su has indicated that school closures are no longer happening this year, but it's sort of unclear what's going to be happening in the longer term. So what kinds of conversations are taking place around whether the layoffs will forestall or eliminate the need for closures or just give us a picture of what's happening there?
So indeed, the one decision that has been made is that schools are not closing for this coming school year. So just want to be very clear. But we ultimately do need to have a conversation around the long-term sustainability of our schools and what that means so that we don't experience or continue to experience some of the challenges we're experiencing now, things like combo classes, vacancies in our classrooms. We have to address kind of the structural nature of our portfolio. And ultimately, that decision is with the superintendent, right? So what I hope you'll hear in the coming weeks is a conversation among the board explicitly asking the superintendent to please identify what are the priorities and the direction of our district so that we can have clarity in thinking through some of these really big decisions that impact every corner of SFUSD. And so that's what I hope that we'll hear in the coming weeks ahead.
And we're really looking to get our budget to a sustainable place. And then once we have that, and once we have some of our systems in place, like rolling out our new payroll and addressing our audit findings, we do really need to think about where are we going to take the district next because cutting just to have a balanced budget is not really a strategic vision for education that everyone in San Francisco deserves, yeah.
Yeah, so because, you know, I covered the school closure last year. It was highly emotional and political, right? So do you think the district, the community, is ready to talk about that again? Are you two ready?
I mean, I don't think anyone comes into education wanting to close schools. I don't think the staff even wanted to close schools. I think there is a reality that we need to address around, you know, the enrollment that we do have, the funding structures that bring us revenue into the district, and what we have in front of us. And that, again, like, that conversation is inevitable. We need to have that conversation. Whether staff are ready for it, whether board is ready for it, I think is more of a question of what have we learned and what are we reflecting on from that time? I mean, let's just be honest. It did not end in the way that I think a lot of people wanted. And I think even the folks who recognized that closures may be necessary were incredibly frustrated from that process. And so just to be really clear, I think there's a lot of lessons learned or things to be taken away from that process that we need to make sure that we understand if we broach another conversation around closures.
And what were those lessons? I mean, what were kind of the takeaways from that conversation and a lot of the, you know, the blowback it received?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's a secret. Like, our district as a whole historically has struggled with communicating both our priorities and the direction. And that has resulted in a lot of trust broken with communities. That's real, right? And among that backdrop, we were trying to have a conversation around school closures. And frankly, having a conversation on closures doesn't instill more trust in the district, right? So that is a reality that we need to continue to grapple with. And the question will always be in the board. Do we make these conversations in a way that attempt to instill a level of confidence and trust in the systems and supports and the vision of the district while having tough conversations about the realities of our district and our portfolio? I mean, that will be forever, I think, something that we will continue to work on and really hold both the superintendent and staff accountable to is, what does that look like? And how do we do this in the most respectful way for our communities?
Yeah, and as someone who experienced the REI process from the perspective of a parent in the district, you know, there were many attempts at community engagement, but they were very kind of high-level. They were vague or ambiguous. We had the surveys that many of us received about what sticks, we were going to put in buckets. And the list was very closely held and, I believe, changing until the very end. And so what that created was a situation where I think a lot of communities were really blindsided at the last minute. And what we need, I think, if we are going to revisit this conversation is to make it a real conversation with school communities so that our time can be spent in making sure that those communities that are affected have what they need moving forward and feel heard and respected and that that, not just in an emotional way, but in a sense of, like, do you need transportation? Do you need your teachers to come with you? Do you need, you know, a certain element of the curriculum or the mascot is really meaningful? Like, what is meaningful to communities? And only like deeply engaging conversations with communities can kind of inform those kinds of decisions by the district.
Yeah, I remember like logistics was one of the, you know, topic that being mentioned that was not really fully discussed during the school closure process last year, too. Yeah, but talking about, you know, holding the superintendent accountable, both of you are introducing a new policy, a short-term policy, to hold both the Board of Education and also the superintendent accountable, which is going to be on the meeting in two weeks. So what's happening? Are you not happy with Maria Su's job performance?
This is not at all about whether we feel a certain way about Dr. Su. I think what we are doing is presenting some short-term metrics to be able to hold ourselves and the superintendent accountable to progress moving forward for at least this school year and recognizing that we are in a very unique moment right now where we have structural, operational, fiscal challenges that we need to address. And we want to be able to do that in partnership with the superintendent and the board to set some very clear metrics around what we anticipate happening over the course of the next year. If anything, I would say, I mean, this is hopefully a demonstration of just unity among the leadership team and governance team in the work that we have ahead of us. And we just want to be very clear upfront and direct about that. And progress monitor that to the best of our ability this coming year.
And one thing that I think that there's a bit of a misconception about, maybe not by folks who are as plugged in as you, but by general public sometimes, is what the role of the Board of Education is. And it's not our job to be managers or micromanagers of folks within the district and to direct a teacher to do this or respond to a particular concern about, you know, some sort of executive issue. Our job is actually to supervise the superintendent. She is our sole employee, and we vest in her the authority to make those management decisions. And so holding the superintendent accountable is also about holding the district accountable to the vision and values of the community. And holding ourselves accountable as representatives of the community, I don't think that San Franciscans deserve anything less.
Do you see, I mean, Dr. Su hasn't been in the position for that long, and she replaced a prior superintendent who also wasn't in the position that long. Do you see her as a long-term fit for that role or more of a caretaker to get through kind of a particularly tumultuous period?
I hope that we will have a long-tenured, successful superintendent and that that will become the norm in SFUSD. I think, you know, part of us setting clear expectations for her and clear accountability metrics is to enable her to know what success looks like and go out and be successful in this job. I think we're all rooting for the success of SFUSD. And I am really glad that we have a new superintendent who's willing to take on the many fiscal and operational challenges that we have and work for the kids of San Francisco at this time. And I hope that more folks will join us who are really interested in joining this exciting moment in SFUSD where a lot of change is going to happen, but hopefully meant much of it for the better and to come, you know, do your part to volunteer at your school, to apply for a role, and help us in this journey because this is a community effort.
Yeah.
We have a question from a member of the audience who wants to know, what is the number-one way you plan to restore trust with parents in San Francisco? You mentioned better communication and things like that. Anything else you would call out?
There's, I think, a lot of work to be done from a staff side and as a district in terms of what SFUSD can do to better engage school staff, communities, and beyond. And so in many ways, it's a question that we also have for Dr. Su of what is that plan to really rethink the way in which our school communities, our staff, central office are engaging with parents, family, students, and beyond? I think from a board perspective, one thing that we are really clear on is that the ways in which we're engaging with our communities, the ways in which we're getting feedback from all different quarters of San Francisco, we need to be really clear about what that plan is, come up with a really agreed-upon strategy among all the commissioners on the board. And that's hopefully what you'll be seeing over the next few months here as we begin our conversations as a board, coming together around, what are the norms and expectations of a commissioner and engaging with the public? And what are we going to do in the, at least in the purview that we have in the short amount of time that we have, not just on the board, but beyond, to really think through new systems and new ways to kind of make that official, formal, and really go to our communities in asking those questions?
And I do remember one of the, I mean, in that short term, holding yourself accountable, having community engagement with the parents, talking to the, you know, different parts of SFUSD community is part of, you know, holding yourself accountable, right? So that's going to be a big part, I guess.
Yeah, and I think at the end of the day, you know, parents want to see the best possible learning experience in schools. That is the same goal that we have. I know that Dr. Su is incredibly committed to that as well. And so the question then becomes, how are we ensuring that members of our communities and beyond have a way to access our families, our educators, our district, our board in a way that uplifts kind of the great work that's happening in our schools and addresses the challenges where there are challenges?
Yeah, and, you know, during the campaign, I heard from a lot of folks, "Come, come visit my school, you know, come see what we're doing because there are so many wonderful things happening every single day in SFUSD." And so I think we want to think collectively as a board, like, how can we make sure that schools feel like they're getting attention from the board, that they're being seen, that they have an opportunity to, you know, lift up the good work that they're doing? And how can we do that more systematically so that we don't end up in a situation where someone says, you know, what we heard this last fall of, "You're closing my school, and you've never even visited." You know, we need to have those relationships, and I think that that is part of building that trust and really listening.
I do want to, you know, maybe take back a little bit about, you know, why we come into this situation, right? We all know the school district has like a massive deficit right now, 113 million. Both of you are new to the board. I wouldn't blame you. You know, you're not really responsible for this, don't worry. So how did we get into this situation? Is this like a 20-years-making, making us into this situation right now?
It's about 10 years or so.
I would say longer than that. I mean, we have, we are now trying to respond to a condition or like a state of our district that is a consequence of many, many years of adult decisions around what we've done with our resources and our schools, right? And that could be anything from enrollment trends over the course of the last 10, 15 years to the ways in which we've decided to allocate our resources across our schools. All of these play a role in leading to where we are today. And I think what we are saying is that we are incredibly committed alongside our board in making sure that we right our ship here, right? And so, so yeah, I think this has been many, many years in the making of where we are right now. And what I hope that our school communities, the public, that you all hear is a very consistent message here of we're staying, we will be remaining, staying focused on how we can right our ship, not just fiscal and operationally, but that we can actually align our resources such that we're delivering on the promises that we make to our families.
Yeah, and the district is subject to some state oversight right now. And there have been some tense moments at times in meetings, you know, in conversation with the representative of the State Department, State Education Department. How is that relationship going and how are you navigating that?
It's ongoing, you know. I think that part of our goal as new board leadership is to make sure that we get out of the position of needing a state fiscal overseer. You know, our district's inability to have just very basic things like seniority lists, good, you know, no audit findings, very basic things, is part of what got us in this situation. And so I do think that it's been very helpful to have the state hold us accountable to making sure that we address those issues. And those are many of the short-term metrics that are on the superintendent's, you know, evaluation objectives coming up. And hopefully, we will be able to thank them for their service and send them on our way because we do really want to make sure that we retain local control of our schools. And I think, I'll just name right now, for example, I'm hearing a lot of frustration from parents about ambiguity over whether they can use PTA-raised funds to pay for positions at schools. And that is an ongoing conversation that we're having with the state because they have rightful concerns about using short-term funds to pay for long-term obligations. But we want to make sure that at a time where we are, you know, there are cuts we have to make, that we are not making cuts that we do not have to make. And if we have outside resources, we're very lucky to be in a city and county and community where people are supporting our schools financially. We want to put those to good use to make sure that every kid has the best educational experience possible. So those are the kinds of ongoing conversations that we're having with the state. I think we're in a place of mutual respect, and we're all moving toward the same goal. But unfortunately, not everything has been hammered out yet, and we hope to have good news for folks and continue to start a pattern of good news for folks.
What you saw probably in the metrics is that we're pretty clear in just bluntly saying that we are, that we want to remain on track towards receiving a positive fiscal certification from the state. And that language is very specific because once we receive two positive fiscal certifications from the state, then we are on track to come out from underneath fiscal oversight from CDE. I just want to be really clear. I think like the relationship that we have with CDE remains and will continue to be a productive one in which there's a reason why they're here, and we understand why they are here. And while, you know, historically, we can't carry the water for previous administrations and previous boards, what we can say is that the board remains pretty unified on the work that we have ahead of us. And I shared this in probably two more board meetings ago. We know that we are asking a lot of our families, our communities, our educators to put their trust in us, both as a board, as a governance team, in Dr. Su. I would hope that the state equally puts that same level of trust in us to follow through on the things that we know we have to do.
We have an interesting audience question I wanted to put out there from Jacob. "SFUSD holds hundreds of millions in underused property. For years, the district has refused to consider selling any of this real estate. This doesn't resolve the current budget, but is there interest in looking at this for long-term stability?"
So --
We were just in a conversation.
I'm a lawyer in my day job, so I put on my lawyer hat. One thing that's very difficult to do, and for very good reason, is to sell public property because that belongs to the public for the public benefit. But that does not mean that we should avoid making decisions to use that public property for the highest, best use for the public. And so I do think that there is a lot of alignment across the political spectrum for creating new housing in San Francisco, for keeping teachers in San Francisco, and all of our other educators, paras, staff, for keeping families in San Francisco, and making this a vibrant, family-friendly city where people feel very comfortable and safe and confident in raising their kids. I love raising my kids in San Francisco. It's really actually like a lot more fun to be a city parent than I thought it might be. And we need to create more housing opportunities for that. And so, you know, I think that that is something I personally would support and would like to see, knowing that it is a very long-term solution and strategy because of how difficult it is to build housing in San Francisco and the additional complications that come from changing the use of publicly-owned property. But I think it is something that we, that deserves looking into for many, many reasons.
Yeah, and I completely agree. I mean, we should make sure that we are exploring every possible opportunity to think through revenue-generating strategies with SFUSD. I mean, we are not just not in a position to not consider those things, but it's just the fiscally responsible thing to do that we know, for example, for teacher educator housing, that it supports our educators. I mean, what is more direct than being able to provide housing for our teaching staff? And so we should absolutely be exploring that. And I think there are a lot of questions to be asked around where we are right now with our underutilized spaces and what we can do. And what are the hurdles legally through the city in partnership with others to enable that to happen?
Yeah, and our first teacher housing project, it did come online last fall. And more recently, the previous school board approved the use of three more spaces. And so there is more property than that. And I'm not talking about, you know, closing a school to build luxury condos. I just want to be super clear. But we own things like abandoned parking lots that are actually a blight that could be used to help our educators live in the communities that they serve.
So there are more housing might come? Because you just mentioned there are three property, I mean, three, three more to come?
Yeah, as I mentioned, it's a very long-term process, but already there are three more that are in the pipeline.
Yeah, I think I do want to follow up a little bit. You just mentioned there are some available funds in the school district that we're technically not allowed to use right now because of the state, you know, requirement or oversight, right? So do you feel like we're flexible enough right now? Or we're still, you know, have an ongoing conversation with the state to use or utilize those funds?
I think we're trying to figure out what the flexibility is right now, right? We know that there, what we don't want is money to be left on the table that will expire by the end of the year. Those are resources that our schools should be using. And it's now incumbent upon a combination of the state And it's now incumbent upon a combination of the state and the district to be really clear with what can be used with resources if they're going to expire by the end of the year, right? And so there's kind of like two different conversations. There's what we can, what can sites and families do to plan actively for the next school year and beyond? And then there's very, a very real question of what about the resources that are in front of us right now? What can we do with that? And so I, those are active conversations that are happening between CDE and the district. And, and yeah, ultimately it's going to be a question of, of can we make sure that we're using our resources responsibly? And making sure that we don't leave anything on the table.
We have another audience question. How do you plan on working with the new administration? SFUSD is governed separately from the city, but what role can, can the city play in supporting your work?
I'll just begin by saying, I think Mayor Lurie has expressed, I think, me and others on the board, his full support and confidence in ensuring that the city will do all that they can to support SFUSD. And I think it's a similar sentiment likewise from the district of, of what can we do to make sure that we are together, right? Thinking through the experience of our families, our young people in San Francisco and do right by them. And so I'm really encouraged by that. I'm really excited to be partnering with the city. And, and here's the reality that I do very much believe that Mayor Lurie and his administration are, are very cognizant of, is when families are raising their, their, when, when parents are raising their families here and guardians are raising their families here, you know, the school district and school experience is one part of what it means to be a thriving family here. And it's a huge part, it's an important part. And we have to really be cognizant about the ways in which our services as a whole, as a city, how we're being, how we are in service of supporting our families that we want to stay in San Francisco. And so I think that not just the desires there, but I, I know that there are active conversations taking place of, of what we can do to come together to do that.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that I'm very excited about, Dr. Sue, is her deep experience with the city. The city does support the school district and we're very grateful for that support, both through bond measures approved by the voters, passed Prop A to help rebuild some of our school sites and modernize them and improve our school lunches through P funds, through student success funds, and we're very grateful to that and want that to continue and want to be very responsible stewards of those funds. But also I think part of the moment of change that we're in as a district is thinking about things differently and not trying to push away help and say, well, we know best, we know how to do everything. We actually have a huge amount of expertise within city government that we can rely on. There are best practices that we can learn from other departments, from other school districts. And having a superintendent who has those relationships and knows how to work within the city, I think is really important for the district this moment. And I'm, I'm very glad to bring my experience from the city in to help facilitate that as well.
I remember the district gets maybe like a quarter of the funding from the city.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah. And also, you know, last year Mayor Bree sent a rescue team to, to the school district, right? So I'm wondering, any specific project you're working with City Hall right now? Any like, you know, ongoing thing?
Well, as you mentioned, 25% of our budget comes from the city. And that can be anywhere from DCYF to early childhood, to our partnerships with the Mayor's Office of Housing, our local measures that kind of fund things like Student Success Fund. So all of those inevitably do have staff that are working closely with the city to figure out how we can best shepherd our, our resources forward. And so I don't doubt that there's active conversations ongoing every day about the ways in which we can kind of leverage our resources from, from city funds to be able to augment the good work that's happening with, with the state funding that comes in.
One of, one of the criticisms that the school board received years ago, around the time of the 2022 recalls was that the board and the district were too focused on, you know, relatively trivial things like renaming schools to the detriment perhaps of student achievement. Talk about what, what, what work is being done right now to re-center student achievement and ensure that, you know, all kids can get a great education in SFUSD, reduce disparities, et cetera.
So I think one thing that I want to be really clear about, especially in the moment that we're in where we have threats from the federal government, is that we are still very committed to San Francisco values, that we will remain a welcoming city for immigrant communities, for LGBTQ families, for folks with disabilities. And that is a key core tenet of everything that we do at SFUSD. And what we want to make sure that we are doing is not just doing that in name and through our words, but actually living that through the results that we get for those kids and those families. And so we are really, I think, refocusing more from, you'll see us passing fewer resolutions and things like that, and refocusing on like the data and where are our kids learning? And what strategic changes do we need to make to ensure more kids are making more strides? Just in getting better educational outcomes.
There is a quote from the Council of Great City Schools that we repeat to ourselves many, many times of, "Student outcomes don't change unless adult behaviors change." And that adult, and those adult behaviors, I mean, to be clear, the board absolutely has a role to play in demonstrating that commitment as well. And I think you see that in the form of our student outcome goals around third grade reading, eighth grade math and college and career readiness. And it's really incumbent upon the board to ask the questions to ensure that we see evidence of that progress year over year. And so part of the purpose of introducing the framework of progress monitoring meetings on, as a board is so that we can remain focused on, are we seeing evidence of that progress towards student outcomes that we say we want to be seeing? And how do we ensure that, that the superintendent is in partnership with the board and very clear in, in seeing that work through?
Yeah. Are there specific efforts that you feel are working well in that regard in terms of boosting student achievement? And, and areas that you think that more work needs to be done?
I think we've made a lot of progress and credit to past boards who have done this. That started far before I joined. But we've adopted a new literacy curriculum that is evidence-based that we are rolling out this year and hoping to see improvements in literacy, especially early literacy from that. Next year, we will be paying for and rolling out and adopting a new math curriculum. And we have instructional coaches at every single school to help with professional development and guiding educators with the skills that they need in order to roll out those curriculas so they're properly used and kids are getting the most benefit. And I think that one thing that is just so important when we talk about SFUSD as a diverse and inclusive public school, we are a school where 86% of our students are students of color. There is not, I think it's a false dichotomy to say that there's this tension or this fight between equity and excellence. If every student in SFUSD gets an excellent education and is able to do what they want with their lives because they have been given the skills and support to do that, that is equity. That is the goal that we are working toward. And so I think that making sure that every kid has those fundamentals, that we're meeting the goals that we've set as a board and that past board set of third grade literacy, eighth grade math, college and career readiness, that is what we're really focused on.
I'm curious, how do you see the role of PTAs at this time, particularly at a time when the school district needs to do a lot of cost cutting? You know, PTAs raise money for, to provide resources and things. And actually, we just got a question related to this from Anne Marie. I joined a call with the state fiscal advisor. He pointed to the district as the reason schools will no longer be able to use PTA funds for teachers for reading aids. And earlier statements seem to contradict this. So there's a specific question about PTA funds for reading aids, but also in general, you know, how do you see the role of those organizations?
I think PTAs are really vital partners for our schools. And they're, I've just, I know it's fundraiser season. I want folks to go out and contribute to and support their PTAs. And I, all of the people who are putting together their silent auctions or their, you know, barbecues or whatever their school is doing, like, thank you for doing that, really important work. And we want to make sure, and we're working with the state to make sure that we're able to put those funds to use to educate kids. And I think there's a larger conversation that has been kind of ongoing in the city for a long time about there are some schools that don't really have active PTAs, that don't have as much funding. And some of those schools, they get other funds because they have Title I funding or other funding that comes with students who have additional needs and supports those students. But there's a bigger conversation to be had around equity and how do we best allocate those resources? And I think there are a lot of parents who are at really high fundraising PTAs who are open to having that conversation about, is there room for us to potentially pool funds or to have a sister school or things like that? Because what we don't want to do is say we're going to take something away from somebody to make things equal. What we want to say is everybody deserves the best. How do we work together to get the best for everyone?
Yeah. I also think it's important to, to share that the way in which schools historically have owned their site budgets has changed in the last two years. I mean, we're in the second year of what we call our school staffing model that is a different way, but is actually the standard way that most districts engage with their school sites around their budgets. It used to be that you got a check that said, this is how much money that you have as a school to, to engage with and you can do as you please, more or less. And we have moved away from that model to what's called our staffing model, which is the more normalized practice among districts to say, hey, as a school, we know that these requirements are necessary for a school, right? This must come out of your local control funding formula, for example, right? And that is a shift that is somewhat uncomfortable and, and challenging for, for staff and administrators to, to work with because it requires a significant amount of change management from how we were to where we're going. And, but it is an important distinction of where we are today versus the years of the past because it, it does shift the way in which the district thinks through funding allocations for schools.
Are there any other kind of out-of-the-box funding, you know, whether through PTAs or other, just for the, just, you know, we talked about housing, for example, is sort of a long-term thing. Any other out-of-the-box sort of funding ideas that are part of the conversation right now? We have actually an audience question, which is about whether you would consider supporting a campaign to tax corporations to raise funds for USD. So an example of just sort of, again, creative, you know, solutions to the, the, the budget crisis.
I think some of these things are a little bit like above what a school board can directly do. But we are really open to all issues. I mean, I, on all, all potential solutions. I think, you know, there are larger conversations happening in California about how we allocate funding to school districts. Right now, it's based on average daily attendance, which means that if you have kids who stay home too many days or are truant, then this funding for that school goes down, but you still need to have a teacher for that classroom. And so there are conversations happening at the state about how might we re-envision funding schools in California more at large? We're certainly, certainly open to any and all folks who want to help fund SFUSD. Spark is our foundation and I think is really energized right now to think about how individuals or corporate partners might want to get involved in supporting SFUSD. We were just at Brett Hart Elementary where the NBA built them a new gymnasium for basketball through, you know, community corporate partnership. And so, you know, I don't think that there's anything that is off the table because the success of public education is so important.
I think the, I mean, the, the way out of a structural deficit is to make structural changes. And so, yes, absolutely, we welcome any philanthropist that wants to write a check to SFUSD or absolutely looking at other costs, both cost savings and revenue generating measures to ensure San Francisco delivers on the district that we know our students and families deserve. And we need to also build a budget that's, that accounts for every single penny that comes from the state that is dedicated to us year over year. And so we have some work to do. I mean, one of the things that we've been talking about is what it would look like for the school board to actively go to Sacramento and have conversations with our legislators about, about the state, the state funding formula. And so those are all critical levers that we need to pull. But I don't, I, I want to underscore as a district, we have an obligation to really ensure that when we say we're spending within our means, what we mean by that is the money that we know is, is owed to us by the state, of which is the vast majority of our dollars, that we can account for that, that we're using them strategically and that they're in service of our goals. And, and how can we grow our pie, right?
Yeah. And we know that it is our job as Board of Education to get a positive fiscal certification, to clean up our books and to be an entity that folks can have the faith and trust in that if, and when they do invest in us, we are going to be good stewards of that money. And shout out to Scott Weiner, our state senate budget chair, who has said that the state budget will not cut public education. We really, I mean, that state-level budget is really the be-all and end-all for all school district budgets. And so, you know, I think that folks can make their voices heard to their state representatives about the importance of fully funding and not making cuts at the state level to public education.
So the revised budget will not have huge cut from the state?
Well, that's what we're, we're waiting for. We have previously heard a commitment that, that education funding will not be cut. That's what we saw from the governor's original budget proposal. And that is what we hope to continue to see moving forward and want everyone to make sure that they advocate for.
Maybe, I mean, another question, Tuesday, President Kim, you announced that there is an uptick from kindergarten application and also transfer, right? So what's happening is all of a sudden we have more kids right now or?
I think in some ways, our, so the TK increase in enrollment is in part due to state laws that have kind of come into play that says that anyone who wants a TK position in SFUSD, they are obligated a seat. And so, which is great and excellent, and we need to do all that we can to ensure that we deliver on that promise. And I, I think the hope, I mean, not the hope, but the message that we receive when we see an uptick in applications is that there's a growing confidence in, in SFUSD being the place of choice for families to send their child to, and that's huge. So it's both something to celebrate and doesn't quite address the, the years of declining overall trends that we've been seeing in the district. And, but here's the thing, the reason why it's so exciting that we see kindergarten applications go up is because that will have a long-term effect on SFUSD because that, that student then ideally will stay within our system and we see that K through 12, that's 13 years of funding for SFUSD that, and that's why that's so exciting to see. And what we of course want to see as a district is much more stable enrollment that continues to grow. And so we owe it to our families to make that case by increasing not just the, not just increasing the outcomes for our students, but delivering on the day-to-days of our schools.
Yeah, and the early education centers that we have that are expanding, both pre-K and TK, are really fabulous. They're like designed for littles, you know, they have this, the little potties that you see, you know, in private preschools. They're warm and welcoming and have low educator to student ratios. They have outdoor spaces. Honestly, often they have a lot more amenities than some of their private counterparts. And as someone who has a kid who's currently in childcare, in addition to my child who's in SFUSD, it's really great to be able to give SFUSD a try. And I'm very much looking forward to taking advantage of the expanded TK eligibility. So now all kids who are going to turn four are going to be eligible to do TK. It's not going to depend on basically what month your child's birthday is. And that's through that state law expansion.
Okay. Well, I have a three-year-old, so that's good to know.
Yes, and, and three-year-olds are PK-eligible, which is great.
We have another audience question I wanted to make sure I got to. This is jumping back a bit to the, the layoff conversation, but this is from David, who wants to know, in selecting teachers who will be laid off, will individual SFUSD administrators have the discretion to retain teachers who they believe are especially effective? Or will layoffs be strictly governed by seniority or some other factor?
Yeah, so in some ways, both the process for layoffs and the selection of, of individuals who then are laid off is written into our codes and our contracts. is written into our codes and our contracts, right? So a lot of that will be based on the district following through on the contracts that we have with our labor partners and what state law requires us to do. I mean, part of the reason why we over-noticed in the way that we did was because we had to meet a deadline of mid-February to do so, mid-March?
Mid-March.
Mid-March to do so. And so some of this is just out of our control. It will be just part of the process in identifying positions and individuals who then are impacted by the layoff notifications.
Yeah. And I've heard this seniority list is like a, somebody will bump another person. It's like playing ping pong, right? It's going to be a super complicated process, right?
Yeah. And that's partly why it's so important that we make sure that we have the right lists and that you probably hear questions from the board in a boardroom asking things like, how accurate and confident are we in the list that we have, in our processes that we have? Because these are, we recognize the gravity of the real decisions that this has and the impact that it has, rather, on our educators and our staff. And that's why it's so important that we have those lists concrete and ready.
And one of the actions that we took this past week was to adopt skipping criteria. And so I also just want to be really clear to parents and educators in the district that there are folks who are in high-needs positions, such as special education, who will not be affected by layoffs because we know we have shortages in those areas and folks with those credentials will not be affected. And then there are other areas that are difficult to fill, like science and math, where those layoffs will not be noticed in the first place because we know that they're so hard to fill.
Yeah.
Well, maybe one last question. Are we going to be a little political? Phil, you're going to be on a ballot next year. Is that something?
I am.
Is there something on your mind?
You better run again.
And, you know, Jamie, you're the highest vote getter in the last election. You know, any, I don't know, tips and, I don't know, suggestions?
Yes, I am aware that I will be on a ballot next year. And, you know, here's the thing. I mean, I'm a career educator. This is my life's work. And so when the opportunity came up to wear a different hat, I said yes, right? So in many ways, I view this as the extension of a lot of the work that I've just been doing, literally in the district as well. And so I think my focus is very closely on just, can we ensure that we're building a vibrant, thriving, sustainable district that anyone, including myself, would want to work for? That families, like our future family, hopefully, will want to send their child to? And that is the most important thing right now.
And I think it was a total trip running for office for the first time this year. And, you know, I've been lucky to live in and serve the city of San Francisco for a long time, but it's very different being a candidate. And different being a candidate from being a lawyer where you're talking about like your client's interests and then you have to talk about yourself. But one thing that I have learned is that I find that San Franciscans, although they love to disagree, actually agree really deeply and profoundly and are often talking past each other. But there's a huge, huge window across the political spectrum of things that folks agree on. And that gives us a lot of political support to, I think, make some really common sense improvements and changes to the district. Because there are, you know, folks, the teachers' union wants more teachers' housing, right? The YIMBs want more housing. And those folks don't agree on a lot. But there are so many things where we do really agree and where I think right now we need to be united in our shared San Francisco values to get a lot done. I mean, the thing we just heard over and over again is, everybody wants and deserves a city that works and a city like San Francisco that is one of the most educated cities in the country, that is one of the richest cities in the country. Why can we not have a government that performs for us better? And that is, that's my calling in my work is, that I do every day in my day job as well, is to make sure that we have just a more competent, responsive government providing people with the services that they deserve. And we have to show in San Francisco that we can get it done. And I think people are ready for that.
And I think we're in a moment right now where the thing that we don't want to fall into the trap of is not considering the structural big changes that we need to build a sustainable district. I mean, there's, the ask has been made of the people of San Francisco, please fix this. And I think we are incredibly focused on that and wanting to make sure that we support the superintendent in coming up with solutions and proposals that come in front of the board that do just that. And so my hope is, in a year from now, our families will agree and the public will agree.
Yeah. One more audience question. This is a nice one to end on. What is your ideal version of SFUSD in 10 years? Some adjectives, a vision?
I really want to see a district where every single neighborhood has high-performing schools of choice that they can access in their neighborhood. I really want to make sure that we are investing in excellence across the district, that we don't have neighborhoods and communities that feel like they're being left behind. And also that we don't have schools that are really high-performing that feel like the district is trying to like kneecap them to take something away. So I think our systems working better together, becoming simpler, becoming more accessible, is all a huge part of that. I want our enrollment system to allow for that. I want people to know that they can send their kid to a great, free, inclusive, diverse school in their neighborhood, and they're going to get a great education. And I think it is really just as simple as that.
Yeah. I could not agree more. And that last part especially around, you know, 10 years from now, I would want every single parent, every single guardian in this city to know that if they enroll in SFUSD, they know exactly what they're going to get, right? A high-quality education, regardless of the school that you've picked, regardless of where in San Francisco you live, regardless of what grade level we're talking about, that you know that you're going to get a school system that responds to you, a district that shows up for you, and a school community that welcomes you. That is the end goal here.
Great. Well, Phil, Jamie, thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate your time. And to our audience, thank you so much for tuning in. Please check out the rest of our work at sfstandard.com. And if you'd like to support our work, we also have a membership plan that you can find on our website. Thanks a lot for tuning in and see you next time.